Let the record reflect that all five commissioners are here and that we'll also be joined by the county health officer as well as the sheriff. And since we've done that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, be led by Commissioner Nelson.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson. Now we'll move on to public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Public cards, comment cards are left at the county's website and to the board, prior to the board meeting have been compiled and made a part of the supporting materials that have been provided to the county commissioners and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during the meeting. Once at the beginning of the board meeting and again at the end of the board meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on the Douglas County Public Comment phone line 775-783-6007. Once a public comment period has been opened. Once public comment closes, the voice messages will be played to the public and the county commissioners in the order they were recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played during the public comment period. The board wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any voicemail is willfully disruptive or of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of others, the voice message will be skipped to the next public comment. Douglas County's Public Comment phone line became available to take public comment at 1:00 P.M. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's Public Comment phone line. Please start playing the public comment if you received any, Natalie.
Yes, Natalie Wood for the record, I have one, I will start playing it.
Ellie Waller, E-L-L-I-E-W-A-L-L-E-R. My comments are recapping yesterday's board meeting. The Conway proposed rezone project was completely ignored. Mr. Slade brought in an excellent comment which should be taken into consideration when you hear this project again. The citizens of Indian Hills, Jack Valley deserve to update their community plans before any more rezoning and residential projects or housing units are approved. I appreciate staff is overwhelmed with too many issues to address, but that doesn't mean the communities at large suffer until additional staff can be hired. The master plan, maps and overlays and updates do not approve zoning changes. The planning commission discussed this issue at length on the Conway project. You as board members should listen to their comments. We need to update the community plans before we are overridden with changes that scare, that get rid of our stairs open space increased traffic which cannot be undone for future generations. Poor decision to commit Douglas County to muller Parkway funds when no one assured that the park development would even get off the ground. The build brand opportunity was passed over as stated last time, now a new submittal. What happens if there is another denial? Also, I have listened to the prosperity centers and Heidi Hildrum's narrative for many years in North Lake Tahoe when I lived there. I want to first thank the board members that questioned the viability of the proposed multi-agency, multi-county housing plan, but also schooled you for going forward with it. There are lots of older homes, apartments and condos available in North and South Lake Tahoe, as well as the valley, Carson City, and into Reno. An inventory of current homes on the market in price ranges that are affordable to the missing middle as North Lake Tahoe coined them never seems to surface. Truckee Inn building apartments, Reno and Carson are in a building boom. Many want brand new or newer homes and may not be a reality for all of them. The citizens of North Lake Tahoe, by the way, are in an uproar and don't want to subsidize middle income or affordable housing. The low and low-low income housing California pays upwards of $300 to $400 per unit to build de-restricted units. It's nuts, taxes go up. Plus, Slough County has purchased open land at exorbitant prices to give the developers land for free. Ten years ago, Norshore asked TRPA to relax standards. They did, and nothing happened except one low-low income housing project at 100% coverage, which is unheard of in Tahoe. So fast forward, a new area plan developed through the TRPA regional plan update in December of 2012 gave more free goodies to developers and still nothing is built.
Okay, that one timed out, I will play the next one.
Hello, my name is Steve Price, last name is P.R.I.C.E. I am a resident of Vinton, and I am just calling to leave a message for the commissioners that I wanted to make sure that since Sisalak has moved us into Phase One, that our commissioners keep the pressure on this covenant. He's talking about two to three weeks for Phase Two. Right now, as with other counties within our state, Douglas County is well beyond Phase Two. Holding all of our counties to meet Sisalak's plan for the entire state to open at the same time is not realistic. Thank you.
Okay, Chairman, that's the last one I received, and that was received at 1:03 P.M.
So we'll wait for 1:08 P.M. to go on. Okay, I see that it's 1:08. Have we received any further voicemails?
No, sir, we have not.
So at this point, public comment will be closed, and we'll move on with approval of the agenda.
Yeah, I would move to approve today's agenda.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Nelson, a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, motion carries 5-0. And we're going to approve the Board of Health previous minutes. And at this point, we would be joined by Dr. Holman and the sheriff to approve these minutes. Dr. Holman, would you like to lead the approval? Since you are the chair?
Certainly. So move to, looking for a motion to approve the Board of Health minutes from regular meeting held on January 13, 2020.
Second. So.
All in favor? Yeah.
So you made the motion?
I did, I did not make the motion, I'm looking for a motion.
Sorry.
That's okay. Any, anybody who would so move, that would be.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
A second.
So motion by Commissioner Penzel, second by Commissioner Rice, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed by nay? Motion carries 7-0. Now, as we move to the Board of Health regular meeting minutes from March 16, 2020, looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Nelson, and was that Commissioner Engels who seconded that? I couldn't.
Commissioner Rice, but that's.
Commissioner Rice. He's, he's quick on the button, isn't he?
Yes, he is.
No, he just never turned it off.
All right. We'll commence devoting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed by nay? Motion carries 7-0. And I relinquish the, my chairmanship back to Commissioner Penzel at this point.
Thank you, sir. And we'll go back, we need to talk about the administrative agenda. And the first item is for just the Board of Commissioners. And I'll read that into the record. For possible action. Update on Douglas County's response to COVID-19 pandemic. Discussion on Douglas County's recovery plan in a safe and reliable manner consistent with the CDC guidelines and the directives of Governor Sisalak. Possible action may include drafting a resolution, submitting a letter to Governor Sisalak to further reconsider his declaration of emergency and directives as it may apply to Douglas County or other actions that will address the financial and public safety impact of Governor Sisalak's declaration of emergency on the citizens of Douglas County. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Cates to lead the discussion.
You're muted. It's, I liked it, but.
Okay, let's try this again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to recap what has been occurring, what we've been doing, what's been going on with the state since the board approved the letter to deliver to the governor that expressed the county's concerns and desires to reopen and suggested some parameters on how certain businesses could reopen. That letter was delivered to the governor on the 29th of April. And that same day, the governor issued Directive 016, which is, sorry, I'm trying to locate it in the package. That's on page 75 of your, your main package. That did a few different things. It it allowed golf courses to reopen, it allowed tennis courts and pickleball courts to be opened. It also allowed religious institutions to have drive-up service, something that he had banned right before Easter. That was, those were all the main components of that. And then the following day, he had a press conference where he rolled out his road to recovery plan. And it was, sorry here, I'm switching between pages. Yeah, Nevada United Roadmap to Recovery. It was a little short on some of the details that we wanted to see, but it talked about how the state could enter Phase One of recovery. That continues with a lot of the same restrictions on individuals in terms of wearing face coverings in public, minimizing social interactions, all those protocols that we've been talking about. No gatherings of 10 or more people, pretty much status quo as far as most of that stuff goes. It talked a lot about the need to build the public health infrastructure, that there are necessary actions to expand testing capability, strengthen the public health surveillance system for tracing, and dramatically scale capacity for being able to isolate people and do quarantines and ensure the healthcare system can respond to potential surges and to protect essential workers and at-risk populations. So he set forward some criteria for moving to Phase One. That had to do with seeing a consistent and sustained downward trajectory of COVID-19 cases and a decreased trend in COVID-19 hospitalizations over a two-week period. The ability for hospitals to maintain capacity without crisis care standards, expanding the ability to administer tests for symptomatic patients and sufficient laboratory testing capacity to provide COVID-19 test samples. And sufficient public health workforce capacity to local and state health departments to conduct conduct, to conduct case tracing. And a sustainability to protect vulnerable populations, and he gave some reference to healthcare facilities and nursing homes. He laid out for the first time a role for local government in all of this, so it does seem like he got the message from local governments, ourselves included. And he talked about Phase One being a county-driven reopening with statewide oversight. I'm sorry, I just lost my place here. So he talked about empowering local governments to tailor specific restrictions on business and public life. But as long as those restrictions didn't go below the standards that the state was setting, and I think that was a key point that maybe is not what we had in mind. I think what we were asking for is that the rules in particular be allowed to proceed at a rate faster than the state. So what he said was that counties could go slower than the general guidelines, so a little bit different there. He said local governments will have responsibility for enforcement. Businesses must comply with all the directives, state regulations, licensure requirements set forward by the state. That includes the Gaming Control Board and OSHA, Industrial Relations, Business and Industry, all those types of entities. And encourage county commissions to collaborate with their counterparts on best practices for reopening. And that they're encouraged, the county commissions, to consult with medical advisors to ensure that the decisions were consistent with containing and reducing COVID-19 transmission. The governor established the LEAP, which was the Local Empowerment Advisory Panel. The purpose of the LEAP was to be a go-between between the state, the governor's office, and the counties. So they, they could collaborate with the counties on best practices as well as inform the governor's decisions on future directives. The LEAP group, stakeholder group, is composed of the Clark County Commission Chair, the Eureka County Commission Chair, Executive Director of NACO, Governor's Office Representative, and representatives from Nevada Department of Business and Industry. Phase One is supposed to be a transmission, a transition from community mitigation to case-based intervention, including strengthening public health suppression efforts and focus on easing restrictions on some businesses and public life with modifications. And the potential duration with it for Phase One is estimated to be two or three weeks. There was some, some talk of Phase Two and Three in that document and in that press conference, but it was poorly defined, not a lot of details. Phase Four is considered returning to a new normal, if you will. Also, as part of that, he asked for the counties to complete readiness checklists. That that was a prerequisite for the counties moving to Phase One. And his plan, as he talked about in, actually it was a teleconference before he had his press conference that day, that he wanted all the counties to move into Phase One at the same time. In order to do that, he wanted all the counties to complete this readiness checklist. The readiness checklist dealt with public health measures, capacities of hospitals, how much testing we're doing, how many positives we have, that sort of thing. I'm pleased to say that thanks to Carson City Health and Human Services who pulled together the responses for the quad counties, we were able to respond to that and provide information to the governor's office within 24 hours of that request going out. So I thought that was very good. That is included in your packet. Sorry, I'm trying to direct you to the page. That would be page 67 on your main, in your main packet. So you have that response there. And again, that's thanks to the, to the work of Genie and the folks at Carson City Health and Human Services. It was a great job. There was definitely some back and forth over the weekend after that data was submitted. The state suggesting maybe the data be configured in a different way, and I think Genie argued successfully to the state that the metrics we've put forward were the most appropriate for our rural counties. So that was all positive, that seemed to be well received. From there, the county has been continuing to work on our own plans to reopen county government as well as trying to compile some best practices and give direction to businesses through the Economic Vitality Program. Lisa Granahan has continued to work with the, her Economic Champions Group as representative of business leaders in our community. There are several things that, that we have done in that regard. She has sent out a lot of information on CDC guidelines, OSHA guidelines, and encouraged every business to develop their own reopening plan. And in the supplemental packet, there's a few things I want to reference, draw your attention to. On page four of your supplemental packet, there is a letter from Business and Industry calling on businesses to develop their own business plans for, to reopen and enact COVID-19 mitigation to keep the public safe and their employees safe. There is also a draft letter, and it's, it's not clear, it's not labeled, labeled as such, but on page nine, it's a draft letter from N-N-D-A. We were working with N-N-D-A, and they've been working on a draft template for a business plan that businesses could use. That is still under review, so we didn't provide the actual template to you today, but that's being looked at by folks at the state to make sure everybody's comfortable with it. And it would be a template that we could send out to businesses to get them started if they don't, don't have the resources to do that themselves or don't know where to start. Also, on page 12 of your packet, this is the supplemental packet, there is a draft Business Resource Guide. And we're trying to put a little more robust guide for businesses on how to develop their plans and what actions to take. We had been preparing this, we actually were going to release it yesterday, but then the governor called the press conference, and we decided to hold off to see what new information we would find. So that's almost ready to go. We're actually adjusting it based on the information that we received last night, which I'll go over in a minute. That will be ready to distribute to the business community to provide some assistance to them to help them get reopened. Also, on page 17 of your supplemental packet, we have a recovery plan for Douglas County government to reopen county government. We have a plan in place that we are just rolling out now to our managers and supervisors and employees just today. And we are seeking to reopen most county offices within the next week. I think by the end of next week, we'll be ready to do that. We have adequate personal protective equipment for our employees. We're going to require employees to wear masks when serving the public at the counters. We are going to ask the public to also wear masks. If they come in our building without a face covering, we will offer them one. We also have enhanced cleaning protocols, social distancing protocols. We've, are installing some face shields at our public counters and, and some barriers for staff for workstations to keep them separate. My goal is to have most of the county offices open to the public with all of those restrictions by the end of next week. That will not extend to all county facilities. We do see the community centers continuing to be closed during this Phase One. Just based on the guidance we've seen from the state, doesn't seem like we're ready for that move yet. But I think this is a big step forward into getting back to, back to normal, if you will. And then yesterday, last night, late yesterday, the governor had a press conference and he issued more details for Phase One opening. That's about a 10-page document that is on, let's see, that starts on page 22 of your supplemental packet. It's page 23, excuse me, Roadmap to Recovery for Nevada. So some of the highlights on this. I actually like this better, document better than his last report, it's a little more direct and prescriptive. So statewide standards for individuals, a lot of the same things. Face coverings strongly recommended in public. Encourage Nevadans to stay at home and limit trips outside of their home. All vulnerable individuals should continue to shelter in place. Visits to senior living facilities are still prohibited. If you test positive for COVID-19 or have been in contact with somebody who's tested positive, you're supposed to self-quarantine. Maintain six feet, social distancing. Continued limitations of public and private gatherings of 10 or fewer people unless they are of the same household. Continue to avoid nonessential travel and people traveling from out of state or coming back to the state are supposed to self-quarantine and monitor health for 14 days. He did add some reference to unsafe homes. So if somebody is in, say, a domestic violence situation, he urges them to leave their homes to stay safe. That was one of the things that we mentioned in our letter to the governor that was of concern. Statewide standards for businesses and employers. He did allow nonessential businesses to start operating under some of the parameters of essential businesses, curbside pickup and that sort of thing. He said they must adopt measures promulgated by the Nevada OSHA to minimize the spread of COVID-19, including social distancing sanitation measures. I think it's very consistent with the guide we've been working on. And to require all employees who are interacting with public to wear face coverings. Beyond that, the guidance that he provided for businesses are, I would, I would call them recommendations rather than mandates. He uses the terminology that he encourages employers to encourage customers to wear face coverings, to encourage telework, continue telework, to have employees return to work in phases, to close common areas where employees might congregate, follow the guidelines of the Labor Commissioner, and to consider special accommodations for employees who may be in vulnerable populations. Consider encouraging employees to do self-assessments on their health each day and remind sick employees to stay sick, or I'm sorry, to stay home. And, and to have enhanced environmental cleaning. I would say that all of these things that he's mentioned, we have in our policies. He does talk about adding signage, requiring social distancing, that, that kind of stuff. So then he gets into a little more specifics on which businesses can open and under what parameters, and this is where we've got some, some changes in the prior guidance. A lot of businesses would continue to stay closed, bars, pubs, that don't serve food. Gyms would stay closed, health facilities, entertainment venues. He mentions recreation and community centers as part of that, so that's one of the reasons we're not looking to open the community centers at this time. Spas, what he calls aesthetic service establishments, which excludes nail, hair salon, and barber shops, so I think that would be, I'm not sure, tattoo parlors. Those are all to remain closed, and gaming will not reopen in Phase One. Let me see here, pretty much everything else for, let's see, recreational areas is going to stay the core. Let me see here, pretty much everything else for, let's see, recreational areas is kind of stay the course. Nevada State Parks are still limited to day use, breweries can still do curbside. He did mention drive-up religious services that they can have drive-up services as long as congregants stay in their vehicles and maintain six feet, which is information he put up previously. Okay, so some specific guidance for restaurants, for, for specific businesses, for restaurants. Restaurants will now be, this is all effective on Saturday. So tomorrow, restaurants will be allowed to open dine-in under strict social distancing requirements. They have to have their employees wear face, face coverings, encourage patrons to do the same. They can only have fifty percent of their available seating. The bar has to stay closed. They can serve drinks at the tables, but they don't want, he doesn't want people congregating in bars. Reservations are required. And if you're waiting to be seated, you have to wait outside. But at least there's a path there for our restaurants to start serving patrons again. Bar, barber shops, hair salons and nail salons. I'll have to say, I was happy to see this included. I, I suspected this one might take a while to get to. I know I'm dying for a haircut. I immediately called my barber and he's so booked up, I can't get in to see him for a week and a half. So I'm not sure what I'm going to do in the meantime. But he is allowing them to reopen under social distancing criteria. He wants partitions or walls between workstations. If there aren't partitions and walls, then the workstations have to be six feet or more apart. And services by appointment only. And that the barbers and stylists have to wear face coverings and customers are encouraged to do the same. Retail businesses, they are allowed to reopen. They're bound by a lot of the same social distancing standards. And wearing a face mask required for employees, encouraged for the public. They cannot exceed fifty percent of the allowed occupancy for their buildings based on the fire code. Open air malls are allowed to reopen as long as they maintain social distancing. Indoor malls are not allowed to reopen. They are allowing automobile ATV recreational vehicle dealers also to open with a lot of the similar restrictions. And drive-in movie theaters can reopen. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if there's any of those left anymore. I think the one in Sparks is still open.
Probably reopen the one in Yerickton.
Oh yeah, there you go. They have stuff on cannabis, but we don't have any of those businesses, so I won't cover that. And he talks about empowering local governments, but again, it's, you're empowered to be more restrictive than my standards, but not less. Which is not what I had in mind, that we would hope we would, would have got out of this, but but at least we're making progress. And I think that the changes that he's, has made for phase one was similar to what we were envisioning for our county. And it looks like that we would probably have to stay in this phase one for three or four weeks. The idea is you give it a couple of weeks and you have time for people to develop symptoms and test to see if there's a spike before you move on to another phase. That all came out last night. There is supposed to be some more detailed guidance that's referenced in this. It's supposed to be coming from the LEAP. I know I talked to the Executive Director of NACO last evening about that. They were expecting that to be released. I have not seen it yet, but it's supposed to be more specific guidance for businesses. So we'll share that with the board as soon as that's available. And that completes my update.
All right. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Ingles.
I'd like to direct this to Ms. Freeman. Can you hear me? Hey, you're muted, I think.
She can't hear you. Your, your microphone is on. Okay. There was something that was put out along with this in regard to some sort of, I don't recall exactly what it was, tracking or something like that. Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, the expectation of being able to do patient tracking. So it's for us to do what we call contact tracing. And it is for us to follow along with everybody who is a positive case and their close contacts while they're in isolation and quarantine. For us to check in with them every day and to make sure that we're ensuring if they have any symptoms that show up that weren't there before or if they need to have additional testing, that we're able to do that. And we are able to do that, sir.
Does that, does that go into our stats that you, you compile? Melissa releases every day or so?
As far as the number of people that we're tracing, no, we don't put that out. We, I can tell you that for every positive case, we have anywhere from four to seven people in addition to that positive that we are tracing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Patrick, I, I have to say, I'm concerned or actually disappointed that they haven't lifted the restrictions on churches. Having people stay in their car six feet apart. I mean, there's other ways we can do that. And I would hope that we can bring pressure on the governor to do that. I mean, Douglas County is pretty much a faith-based community and we really need to get that underway right as soon as possible.
Mr. Walsh, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. And I've also contacted the LEAP and asked for additional guidance so we can do something for the faith-based community. To my amazement, they forwarded that on to the governor and I was told that the governor is seriously considering what to do next. And that he understands that this is a big issue.
Glad to hear that.
Having said that, having said that, our current directive is what we have. And we could make it tougher, but I don't think that's what we want to do.
No, thank you for that. Very, I appreciate that. Hopefully, we can get the governor to come off a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, Dave, did you have a question or comment?
Just a comment. I've been in contact with three restaurants in town that one is planning on opening next Friday, a week from today. The other two don't have a definite day yet when they're open, but they all understand the social distancing and no more than fifty percent occupancy. And that their servers will have to wear a mask and hopefully the, the their customers will too, except for when they're eating, I guess they can take them off.
No, they gotta, they gotta have the stuff all pureed. I, I think you received the same note that all of us received about Dr. Simon and his proposals for what to do. I was reading through those while Patrick was talking and checking them off against what the governor has. He actually goes a lot further than what the governor does. I, I say, good for him. But I'm not sure that we want to adopt all that as a directive for everybody. In, in the bottom line of his, he says that everybody should have the same level of protection, I think is the word he uses. One of the things he, he said was, which is not part of the governor's, is that we should have a rule that the people taking the money should have, or credit cards should have gloves on and they should change those gloves every time. So that would be a lot of gloves if you're a busy place. Now, I, I'm sure doctors do that all the time. At least I hope they do. And Dr. Holman, do you have a comment on that? Something we should require or?
They're, they're expensive, so I just keep using them all throughout the day and it saves a lot of money that way, so.
But in all seriousness, should we, should we make it more specific? Are you gentlemen thinking that what the governor's outlined is the best process? Mr. Rice?
I've received and I'm sure that most of the board has demands everywhere from, don't open anything up to open it with no restrictions. And I, I think that we would be doing our businesses and people in our county a great disservice if we opened it up without by going further and allowing more than what the governor is allowing. Because then what happened to, uh, one of the businesses here in town is that the AG's office is going to come in and shut them down. And I think that we would be doing our businesses a great disservice. On the other hand, I don't think that we should go any further and become any stricter than what the governor has already laid out here. I, I think that our citizens of Douglas County have shown great responsibility in, in abiding by the rules that we have. And I think that they are most aware of the chances of this relating again. And I, I believe we ought to go no further than what the governor is allowing.
Okay, any other comments?
Question. There was nothing specific about the beaches at the lake in regard to I don't know what the status is. Commissioner Rice, you, you're up there and you see what's going on. Any status on that?
Yeah, most of the beaches here in Douglas County are my own. And I, I've received some complaints about the quote Forest Service Nazis kicking them off of the beach when they're down walking their dogs. But Zephyr Cove is still closed. People are parking on this, on the highway and walking across the fence and, and into the, into the beach areas. And to my knowledge, it's not been a problem. They're not parking like they were up at San Harbor where they're using. Instead of parallel parking, they were perpendicular parking with their cars sticking out in the street. But as far as is here concerned, I, I know of no problems. And I know that as soon as they're willing to open the beach, as soon as the federal government is willing to open the beaches, I, I think that they will be doing their own regulations.
I would propose that we would discuss these items and any specific things like the beaches, which is a great one. And boat ramps and things like that. I think we should probably discuss those in item three when we talk about making recommendations to Governor Sisalak if you want to write a letter. I, I think right now we want to confine it to what the, the county managers talked about and his update and the things he's doing to bring the county forward. And if you're satisfied with that, then I think we move, move on to the Board of Health and we'll adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay.
Did, uh, any questions or comments based on what Mr. Gates has said? Okay, then we'll move on to the County Board of Health and we'll adjourn as the the Board of Commissioners and now we'll reconvene as the County Board of Health. In this regard, then I will turn the gavel over to Dr. Holman and he can read item two into the record. I'm retiring.
Enjoy your retirement.
My colleagues will enjoy my retirement.
All right, we'll convene in the Board of Health for Douglas County at one forty-four PM. Dr. John Holman Chair, item number two for presentation only. Discussion of number one, the statutory role and function of the Douglas County Board of Health under NRS Chapter four thirty-nine. Two, the authority of the Carson City Health and Human Services relating to public health preparedness, mandatory reporting of diseases and surveillance of all reportable diseases in Douglas County pursuant to the delegation of authority from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services. And three, the role of the Douglas County Board of Health and COVID nineteen recovery efforts. And this time we'll turn this over to Zach Wadley and Chief Dave Poverson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Zach Wadley, District Attorney's Office for the record. To start with, what I wanted to do is provide the board as a whole with a brief overview of the statutory framework in Nevada relating to authority, jurisdiction and responsibility over public health and infectious disease control in Douglas County. And first, the, the broad point to understand is that local county boards of health such as ours are generally subordinate to the State Board of Health pursuant to Nevada law. NRS four thirty-nine point one five zero states, quote, "The State Board of Health is hereby declared supreme in all non-administrative health matters. It has general supervision relating to the preservation of the health and lives of citizens of this state and over the work of the Chief Medical Officer of the state and all district, county and city health departments, boards of health and health officers." So that's, you know, just something to, to keep in mind in general as we go forward today. NRS four thirty-nine point two eight zero through NRS four thirty-nine point three six zero govern county boards of health such as ours. And the specific county board of health statutory duties are listed under NRS four thirty-nine point three five zero. And they include, one, to oversee all sanitary conditions of the county. Two, adopt such regulations as may be necessary for the prevention, suppression and control of any contagious or infectious disease dangerous to the public health, which regulations take effect immediately upon approval of the State Board of Health. So that last phrase is, is significant. Per state law, any Douglas County Board of Health regulation relating to, for instance, this COVID nineteen situation would have to be approved by the state or at minimum consistent with state guidelines. And, and as we discussed a bit in the last item, with respect to the, the guidelines issued yesterday by, by the state government through the governor, through Governor Sisalak. And it was stated that individual counties can adopt more restrictive guidelines if they believe it's necessary, but cannot adopt less restrictive guidelines. And that's generally consistent with the statutory division of authority over public health under Nevada law. County Board of Health powers are provided under NRS four thirty-nine point three six zero. They include, one, to abate nuisances in accordance with the law. Two, establish or maintain quarantine or isolation hospitals or stations. Three, restrain quarantine or quarantine any person or groups of people sick with or exposed to a communicable disease. Four, appoint quarantine officers if necessary to enforce the quarantine. And then five, establish fees for, for health permits and other permits subject to the approval of the county commission. So that, that's a general overview of what authority and power the, the county boards of health have, subject to the supervision and review of the state boards. I, I want to move on now to Carson City Health and Human Services role in, in this matter and how that came about and some of the, the, the history and statutory authority for that. So under NRS Chapter four forty-one A, if a county is not part of a recognized formal health district, the responsibility over the investigation, reporting and surveillance of any infectious disease within that county lies either with the state chief medical officer or the state officers designate. Douglas County is not part of a formal, formalized health district. I believe only Washoe County and Clark County have, have health districts separate from the state. So what that means under state laws, that responsibility over infectious disease investigation, reporting and surveillance in Douglas County lies with the state chief medical officer or that officer's designate. Now for Douglas County, the state chief medical officer- Now for Douglas County, the state chief medical officer delegated that authority. To the Carson City Health and Human Services Department on behalf of Douglas County, Carson City, Story County and Lyon County. That was pursuant to a written formal delegation of authority dated October 6, 2009 issued by the state. Of course, during this COVID-19 event, the quartet that I just referred to has been referred to as the Quad County Region. The Quad County Emergency Operations Center has been managing COVID-19 event through Carson City Health and Human Services. With the cooperation and support from Douglas County, Carson City, Story County and Lyon County, including personnel from each of those counties. This is Douglas County situation is different from all other rural counties. Who have to rely on the state to conduct their COVID-19 testing, investigation and surveillance. And just as a personal commentary here, I think Douglas County in particular has been particularly well served. By the Quad County Arrangement because there's just been more local involvement. Control and communication related to this event that other rural counties aren't necessarily getting. So at this time, I want to turn it over to Chief Dave Fogerson to generally discuss what the Quad County Emergency Operations Center has been doing. Throughout this event. Dave.
Perfect, thank you Zach. Dave Fogerson Deputy Chief Reese Ford Fire and Deputy Douglas County Emergency Manager for the record. I want to talk about how we're involved with all this operation. It's that way everyone has a feeling that it isn't Carson City doing something to us, but it's us doing something with Carson City completely. So obviously we have Patrick Kates and Jennifer Davidson is the county manager and assistant county manager. Chief Carlini, myself and our other deputy chief Amy Ray are in constant communication with them to make sure we're managing the emergency management aspects of our community here. And then we have what we call the Multi-Agency Coordination Group, the MAC. And that's the emergency managers from all four of the counties that we're talking about. Along with Dr. Freeman from Carson City Health and Nikki Aker, who's a registered nurse, who's a Carson City Health Human Services Director. We meet every day at 11:30 to have a discussion about what's going on. To oversight the incident management team we have assigned and I'll talk about that incident management team in a minute. To look at our scarce resources, to see where our hospital beds for both acute ICU and ventilator statuses. Looking at cost containment issues, sharing some situational awareness that we're aware of what's going on, not only with the incident, but also things that are affected by the COVID-19. And then looking at the future because obviously we're not going to stay at this level forever, so we're talking about where we go from here. And those conversations then we get relayed back to the county managers that way. We're back in a loop and a lot of stuff also comes back to the Board of County Commissioners and most county employees when we send out. At least a three time a week update on what the status of things going on. From that MAC group, I'm assigned as the Emergency Operations Center Manager for the four counties. We have an incident management team assigned to us and this is really where the rubber meets the road and how we're implementing all those activities. Carson City Health Human Services is the premier to me health district or health department in the state of Nevada. They're not going to socks off everybody else in the state right now, including the two larger health districts. And they're doing that because we've been able to help boost their activity by providing people. I called and talked with our logistics section chief this morning, we have 180 people assigned to the incident tomorrow. There's no way that any one of the four counties would be able to pull that off without all of us working together. So the different parts of incident, we have. I say epinephrine, epidemiologist and contact tracing. Where we have actually Douglas County Public Health Nurse working with Carson City Health Human Services to do that contact tracing. Working with Mr. Booth on the, on all the epidemiology parts and making sure that we meet the criteria. Of checking in with those people, talking to them on a daily basis, seeing their symptoms, making sure they're staying at home. And then if they have a need to leave their house, then we tie back into social services with Karen Beckenbauer or Scott Morgan. And a couple of other people and we take care of those services that way the people that are affected stay at home. And majority of cases all have a direct contact with somebody else that has that. Has COVID and that's the reason why we want to keep those people isolated. We have a call center and that's that COVID hotline after the four counties. So if anybody has a question about COVID, they call that, anybody wants to be tested because they're having symptoms can call that. And then they get to a nurse for triage and then they get tested from there. We also have a community testing section right now because we started this week on Tuesday. And then yesterday and again tomorrow and again on Monday, we're going to test 1,800 residents. So far we've done 800 tests, we've gotten 200 results back when I heard and checked in last night, a negative test out of the 800 so far we administered. So things are looking good on those asymptomatic people out there. We have the Healthcare Coalition and that's really where a lot of this all started. Is we started Healthcare Coalition, it used to be the Douglas County Healthcare Coalition. And we got everyone together from the 911 dispatch center to the coroner and every part of healthcare in between. And we met, we talked about all our issues and that's what led us to open the community clinic. That's what led us to making a Board of Health here in Douglas County because it's relatively new to have a Board of Health here. I'm thinking we're on about year four or five maybe of having that Board of Health. And so we've expanded that Douglas County Healthcare Coalition to a Quad County Healthcare Coalition. And so we have a liaison that's meeting with all those people, they're having phone calls twice a week. And daily emails out to all of our healthcare facilities. And if you think about these are true at-risk populations that we want to make sure stay isolated, stay safe. And we test them and we get them the resources they need, so we don't get an outbreak in a skilled nursing facility or a senior living facility. We're also talking all the public safety agencies, whether it's a sheriff's office, whether it's juvenile probation, whether it's emergency management, whether it's a fire districts. Through all four of those counties to make sure that we're meeting everyone's needs and that was the big part for having to drum up the incident to start with was the logistics. Everyone needed that PPE, people had PP on hand for a week, maybe two and commercial suppliers failed. So then we had to get that PP out not only for healthcare providers, but also for our first responders. Even as simple as a DA's office investigator to make sure that they have the equipment they need, so that way they can still continue to do their job. And then we also have a test result callback unit right now that as we get these test results back that are negative. We call back those people and make sure that they positively get a contact from the incident that they're negative. It is a huge ball of wax and a lot of communication going back and forth. Now I talked before, the heights we had 27 stand meetings a week. We're getting down to a point now where we're starting to look and we're having a conversation about how we start tuning some of the stuff back. And it will work long term, we know that we want to continue with some of this community-based testing. We're going to reach out to the, our senior living facilities and our skilled nursing facilities and start doing testing in those places. We know we're going to have to keep doing that symptomatic testing and we've got great partners, Carson County Medical Center, the Washoe Tribal Clinic, Carson Tower Hospital. Some physicians offices here in town, Barton up at the lake at the Stateline Medical Center, all helping that symptomatic testing. So that way we test just about anybody who has a symptom. And that's been some changes over time as the testing has gotten to become more prevalent. The list of symptoms that allows you to get when those symptomatic tests has increased. Along with our numbers of people that are able to be tested. Because I know that that was one of the major complaints we had when we started, not a lot of people getting tested because we had such tight rules on who we tested. Those have really loosened up and we've advanced a lot on that. So the collaboration and cooperation between the four counties, it really is a band of brothers of everyone coming together. And making sure that we can stand together. 180 people, there'd be no way that we could pull this off if we looked at this from a single community. So putting everyone together with that great expertise at Carson City Health Human Services, again. My personal opinion is that they are the best health department in the state of Nevada, hands down. That support that we've given from Douglas County, from Carson City, from Story and from Lyon is all what's making this work.
Thank you, Dave, Zach Wadley District Attorney's Office for the record. So what's the county board of health role at this stage in the COVID-19 event? First of all, if it were necessary, the Board of Health could establish and enforce quarantines. Of individuals, that hasn't been necessary thus far because there's been voluntary compliance. By the folks that have unfortunately been infected, if there weren't, you know, we would hear about it from Dr. Freeman and Dustin. And the Board of Health in conjunction with the DA's office could conceivably take action in those cases. Aside from that, as I stated in my presentation, the Board of Health could administer and establish regulations. As may be necessary for the prevention, suppression and control of any contagious or infectious disease, which of course includes COVID-19. However, as I also stated, any regulations promulgated by the Douglas County Board of Health. Would need to be either approved by the state or consistent with existing state guidelines. And in particular where we're at right now, the guidelines were issued just yesterday. For movement into phase one of the reopening process. The current state directives, regulations, whatever you want to call them for phase one are active and they're in place statewide. I don't think the Board of Health necessarily has to take action to adopt those guidelines specifically for Douglas County. But as we discussed, the board could conceivably take action to impose more stringent regulations in certain areas if they wanted to. As the process moves forward towards phase two and beyond and more reopenings. There may well be future need for Board of Health meetings to consider and potentially promulgate. Reopening regulations specific to Douglas County. Particularly if our openings occur at a different rate, a different timeline than the rest of the state. And that's possible going forward, we'll see how things play out, but obviously the situation remains fluid at this point. And we'll see how the next two to three weeks unfold. And of course, Board of Health meetings can be called quickly if necessary to deal with these going forward. So Mr. Chair, that concludes our presentation and I'd send it back to you for a discussion or questions.
At this point, I just also wanted to add that I'm in regular contact with Chief Fogerson and all the members of. Carson City Health Human Services through an email group, I also get regular phone calls from Dustin Booth, epidemiologist. At Carson City Health and Human Services to discuss any specific Douglas County cases that have come up. And it's been actually really an awesome experience for me to be a part of this. Because of the great coordination and the great work that has been done to trace these cases. I am impressed and having served 24 years in the Navy, we had a pretty good public health system in the Navy. And it's not rivaled by what we're doing here, this is very, very impressive. And everybody's professional, knows their job, we have also good redundancy in things that need to be done. So I just wanted to add that, that as the county health officer, I feel very well informed what's going on. From the Quad County Healthcare Coalition and Mr. Booth and I have regular conversations about, you know, where are we going next with this? And it's actually been very helpful for me, so with that I will open it up for questions, comments and Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. What agency, who is responsible for making inspections in our county of retail outlets or restaurants?
So the food establishments, that is, that falls under Carson City Health and Human Services, we actually contract with them to provide that. To give them their, you know, A, B, C, D ratings that we all see stuck up on the wall. As far as retail establishments or establishments who are, who are, may or may not be following some of the guidelines. I don't think we have established a particular, you know, force to go out there and inspect to make sure that things are happening. We certainly don't have enough people to go and look at every restaurant and make sure that they're all six feet apart and they're wearing the face masks. There's just not enough personnel to do that.
So this would probably be complaint driven then?
It would likely be complaint driven, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Nelson, sorry, I blacked out there for a second, Commissioner Nelson, go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Holman, I had a question, talking about rubber gloves and I was wondering. The solutions that are like 70% alcohol you can take and put on your hands and rub them together and. And within a few minutes they're dry again. Would that be a cheaper way of cleaning your hands and wearing gloves and taking them off each time?
Absolutely, first of all, rubber gloves, as soon as you touch something, they're contaminated, so you'd have to change them out so often. My recommendation would be you just have a huge jug of hand sanitizer on the counter. And every time you touch something, you use the hand sanitizer. And it's, the availability of that is much better, you know, a few weeks ago that was a little dicey to say that because it just wasn't available. But I think now with the ramp ups, that would be probably less expensive and actually a better way to avoid transmission at that point.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Patrick, county manager.
I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Walsh's question. As far as the retailers, you know, the chairman is correct that there isn't really an inspection group at this point. But I do know that Nevada OSHA is putting out guidelines and regulations. It was the Department of Business and Industry, Industrial Relations that put out the letter telling businesses they needed to have plans. And to the extent there is going to be any type of inspection regimen around retailers, non-food establishments, I would assume it would be coming from them. I know GOED has also played an informal role, we've directed several businesses that wanted their processes reviewed. To NMDA for like curbside pickup, that sort of thing, and they provide guidance and told businesses that they were good to go on their plans. Just kind of informal, but I assumed going forward that's where that will come from.
All right, thank you. Other comments or questions? Great, let's move on, thank you Zach and Chief Fogerson, that was a great presentation, appreciate that. We'll move on to item number three for possible action. Discussion of number one, the Nevada United Roadmap to Recovery issued by Governor Sisalak relating to COVID-19. Number two, CDC and OSHA guidelines applicable to the general public and businesses within Douglas County relating to COVID-19. And three, possible direction to staff regarding the preparation of regulations as a part of Douglas County's COVID-19 recovery plan. And we'll call on Patrick Kates and Todd Carlini to help lead us through that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I think the original intent with this agenda item, before we had the information come out from the governor yesterday. Was to have the board consider enacting some regulations for businesses, industry by industry. And I anticipated we'd have a discussion about some of the CDC and OSHA guidelines that have been issued. I did, in the supplemental packet, I did give you a set of guidelines that are draft from the CDC that are pretty specific by industry. But based on what the governor has come out with and what Mr. Wadley was just discussing. I'm not sure that the board would want to take action or dive into that at this point. You know, I approach this from an assumption that counties were going to take additional measures. To allow businesses to reopen faster than the rest of the state and it doesn't seem like we are at that point yet. So I don't know where the board wants to go with that.
All right, Commissioner Rice, go ahead.
As I said a little bit earlier, I think that we would be doing our business as a disservice if we went beyond. Or should I say making our regulations less than what the state is requiring? Because as evidenced by what's already happened. We'll say go and then they do and then the Attorney General's Office comes in and cites them and shuts them down. So I believe that the regulations or the suggestions given to us by our esteemed governor. Are more than adequate to take care of where we are now. And as I said before, I think Douglas County residents have done a great job. Social distancing and abiding by all of the requirements that the governor has thrown out to this point. I see no. I can see no need for us to be more restrictive.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you. I agree with Wes. I just have a general question. Patrick, maybe this is you. Are we opening up parks and skate parks and disco?
So according to his guidelines, he lifted the restrictions on golf courses, tennis courts and pickleball courts. The other restrictions are still in place. He refers to it as, refers to it as, gosh, I can't find it. He refers to it as recreational equipment that would cause people to congregate. So basketball courts, playgrounds, that sort of thing. He still wants closed.
All right, any other comments or discussion on this item? I agree with Commissioner Walsh, Commissioner Rice, that we do not need to get more restrictive in Douglas County. We have three active cases total in Douglas County right now. We've done a great job with social distancing. I think one of the things that we do have to be ready for is if we do get a spike in cases as we open up the county and we have to be aware of that. So we may need to reconvene in the future if we get a spike of cases. And I just wanted the Board of Health to be aware of that. We'll be monitoring it closely and if it looks like we're having issues, then we can reconvene. But I think that, given what we have discussed today, that, you know, going by the governor's recommendations at this point is what we need to do and what we're legally bound to do.
Dr. Holman?
Yes, who was that? Was that Sheriff Coverly? Thank you.
So one question that I have for maybe Chief Carlini and G D Freeman is as the COVID thing slows down, hopefully we continue that trend and start opening up, the mental health portion of the effects of COVID-19, I think, are going to continue. And my office is seeing that and people that we're having to deal with on the street. I know Karen at Social Services is seeing that. So what help or what, you know, is there any thought of resources that we can get from you guys to help us or support, I guess, for our mental health issues that we, you know, we see and I think we're going to continue to see maybe an increase?
So Sheriff Coverly, this is G D Freeman. Actually, earlier yesterday, I believe, Dr. Woodard from the State Division of Public and Behavioral Health, she oversees the behavioral health piece of the state's plan for crises. She had sent out an email to the various counties telling everybody that they are putting in a grant at the state level. It's another aspect of the CARES funding to be able to hire crisis counselors for social services. And the counties were to respond, I believe those emails were sent out to behavioral health representatives and stuff in the different counties. And each county was to determine if that was something that they wanted to put in. I'm unsure if Karen received that email or who that might have gone to in the county. I know that Carson City put in a request for that, but that was a county-by-county basis, not something that Carson City Health and Human Services doesn't do behavioral health for Douglas County. So that's one of those things that I believe that there should have been a grant email that would have come from Dr. Woodard. If that was not received, I can forward that to Karen this afternoon.
This is Patrick. I just wanted to say I haven't seen that, but I'll follow up with Karen as soon as we're done with this call.
I would suggest, G D, if you could forward that to Karen anyway, just to cover our bases. I don't think she's on this call right now and that would just kind of close the loop to make sure that we have that information.
Absolutely. I'll forward it to Karen, Dr. Holman and Mr. Kate.
I hear Karen in the background. Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Karen. I have seen those. There's, I'm looking at a couple of things with it to see what it is that we need to do in Douglas County. We have really good relationships with the behavioral health providers that we have. So I'm talking with them about what their capacity is to continue the relationships that we already have in place and then what those grant funds will allow us to add to on our end as well. So I'll keep the group informed as we go forward.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments?
Dr. Holman?
Is that Sheriff Coverly again?
No, Chief Carlini.
Chief Carlini, I can't see you, chief. Go ahead, chief.
That's okay. We're doing our six feet.
Okay.
Danny, in response to your question there, I'm not sure you're ready to turn the MOST program back on, but I think that would be another avenue. I know Eastport would be committed to that. We reach a lot of people with that program and certainly recognize the need to have to close it in the initial pieces of all of this, but I think that's another resource as well as the, you know, suicide prevention group that's out there and the tireless efforts that those folks put forward. So I guess those are, you know, two more avenues just to mention on record. We haven't stopped our MOST program. We've continued that. It's been, we've had to change kind of how we do it with the clinician and stuff. But I think increasing that, if we could, the days that we're able to go out would be beneficial. That's a great program and it really works well. So increasing the time that they go is, I'm all for that. To the furthest degree that we can, increase our communications, you know, between our agencies and contacts and that type of thing too. You know, at that ground level, I think would help as well during this period. You guys are seeing it, you guys are in and around some of that much more than we are, obviously. You know, we're there most of the time upon a request for a call and generally from you, from your personnel, so. And we're seeing a lot of people from outside of the area. So they're transient coming through Douglas County or they've, you know, been dropped off here by somebody else, which happens, so.
All right, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief Carlini. Any other comments or questions?
Doc?
Commissioner Angles, go ahead.
Our focus has just been concentrated on the, this virus. What of the medical facilities been seen aside from this? Has there been anything else of interest?
So, great question. So as we started this whole COVID-19 issue, one of the big challenges was we were at the tail end of our flu season. So we were having influenza A and B overlap with COVID-19, very similar symptoms. Not quite as lethal influenza, not quite as lethal as COVID-19. But we had hospital beds being taken up with people with influenza and pneumonia and COVID-19. That was one of the big issues with our attempts to flatten the curve was that we could have gotten overwhelmed with pneumonia, flu, COVID at the same time. Flu is starting to wane. It's still going on, but it's going to kind of tail off over the next few weeks. And other than, that's really helped a lot with the number of beds and ICU beds that are now not really occupied in our area. Carson Tahoe and Carson Valley Medical Center have, we're good with hospital beds. So if we do have a little spike, we can go ahead and care for those people. We're not at capacity. So timing is good for the opening as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One thing I wanted to do, when we first started this whole COVID-19 thing, I think myself included, we kind of all thought that this was just a really bad flu. I've done some calculations to give an idea of what the mortality rate is from this. And so influenza average mortality rate is about 0.1 to 0.4%. For COVID-19 worldwide, it's 7%, so almost 150 times greater. U.S. is about 6% mortality rate. France, the UK and Italy are at 15% mortality rate. Spain is at a 12% mortality rate. So these are, these numbers are important because there's very few, you know, viruses that have that high of a mortality rate that are spread so rapidly. This is the concern with this particular virus is that it spreads quickly, it spreads rapidly, and the mortality rate is quite a bit higher than we originally were led to believe with some of the data that was coming out of China. So this is, you know, a serious, a really serious illness. And I think that as a county, we've been taking it very seriously and doing the things that have helped to really flatten the curve and really keep Douglas County healthy. So I just wanted to, I want to point that out. So as we're thinking about this, we're not thinking about a bad flu. We're thinking about a really serious illness. The hospitalization rate is also about five times as high for COVID-19 as it is for influenza. So not only are people dying from it, they need a lot more intensive hospital care. So it tends to overwhelm the system. So I just want to point that out. But I also wanted to say that, that through the efforts of Douglas County citizens, really, it's been, we've been able to flatten the curve and really, hopefully, knock on wood, avoid a lot of the challenges that some of the other areas have had with the high number of cases and a lot of people in the hospital. Commissioner Rice, go ahead.
From what we witnessed over Easter break, or if we still have Easter break, but the spring break, seems like a lot of the young people think that they're bulletproof. And it seems to me, if I recall correctly, our latest case was a 20-year-old healthy person here in Douglas County. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And have they done any tracing on him to see how he got it or who he might have shared it with?
Right. They're doing the contact tracing right now. I don't have any results of that. I also recently read some statistics out of New York that 84% of their recent COVID-19 positive cases had been staying at home and self-isolating. So I think my personal opinion, and this is just my personal opinion, is is going to shopping areas for food and other items like going to Costco and Walmart and Home Depot is probably as dangerous as going anyplace just because of the number of people there. So I think that we want to stay as home as much as possible and stay away from any crowded conditions. Drove by Home Depot last night, the parking lot was full, absolutely full, never seen it that full. So we need to continue to try and encourage people to stay home because it's so easy to catch this virus, you know. And there are asymptomatic people probably out there walking around or people that think they're having allergies and they're walking around with COVID-19. So it is highly contagious and a lot, a lot more deadly and a lot more serious than we originally were thought, we're thinking a couple of months ago.
Chair?
Yes.
Chair, Chief Bogerson?
Chief, hi, chief, go ahead.
I just got a note from Taylor Radke, sorry, Taylor Allison now, who's on the Committee for Health, talking about the behavioral health stuff. We do have a Douglas County Behavioral Health Task Force that she should chair up. She says that we got plenty of outpatient capacity between the state rural clinic, Carson Valley Medical Center and CTH. We're not really utilizing the telemedicine or the crisis call lines with behavioral health people. So might be something that we get her and that group together to have that discussion about how we help the sheriff's office and the fire departments out, fire districts out to help those people. And Karen Beckenbauer and all, that group that's involved with the Behavioral Health Task Force could probably help solve some of that problem for us.
I think that's a great idea. Let's see if we can have them take up that issue. All right. Other comments, questions? All right, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting. I'm going to do ahead and go to the closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Doug's County Board of Health. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on Douglas County's public comment line. The voice messages will be played in the public and county commission in order they were recorded. Nor more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played to the county commissioners in public. Do we have any more voice messages to play?
Natalie, what's the record? I've received one so far, so I will play it.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Jim DeGraff, D E G R A F F E N R E I P. First I am in the Garden of Gold Ranches. I am in favor of taking further steps to reopen Douglas County. As Mr. Kates indicated in his summary, the governor's directives were not with the commissioners and the residents had in mind with the letter that he delivered to his office last week. The goal was to allow rural counties, where the threat is far lower than it is in Las Vegas, to be able to move ahead with reopening plans that better reflect local conditions. Because the governor didn't get that message, I believe that it's time for the commission to consider using the powers. You're given an NRS 244-137 through 244-146 for functional home rule to implement reopening plans that are more aligned with the needs of the county that has had few, if any, serious cases, no deaths, and has only three currently active cases. NRS specifically places the county commission directly in charge of matters of local concern and defines several areas that are under your direct control, including public health, safety and welfare, outdoor assemblies and public property and buildings. It specifically mentioned that the community center would not be open because of state guidelines. NRS 244 specifically gives power over the operation of public property and buildings, including without limitation facilities that include recreational centers. So it is clearly within the county's sole authority to determine whether that facility reopens. The same should apply to opening any county-controlled beaches, trails and other recreational facilities. NRS 244 specifies that the sample list and powers is neither exclusive nor exhaustive. And with any doubt, this be resolved in favor of the county, which should give the board the opportunity to reopen things like church services, mental gatherings, presumably with appropriate social distancing and protective safeguards. I don't believe that the governor can unilaterally take away this board's power over local affairs in Douglas County by merely saying the counties cannot implement policies less strict than his. State law branch uses specific powers and I believe that given the COVID situation in Douglas, the board should actively and aggressively pursue the rights of the county as specified in the state statute. Thank you.
All right. Any other, that's the end of the messages?
Yep, that's the only one that I have received so far and that was at 1:48 p.m.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll adjourn the Douglas County Board of Health at this time. Commissioner Penzel and the other county commissioner business, you need to take care of at this time?
No, none that I know of.
All right, we'll consider all the boards adjourned and thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you.